Okay, it is seven o'clock on Monday, September 25th, and I'll call the meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zammens, Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller, Roberts, Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Seeing a quorum, barely. We'll continue. First, we have approval of minutes of the previous meeting, September 11th. Did anybody have any corrections? Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Been moved in second, uh, moved by Wu, seconded by Jacobson. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. We don't, I don't have any public input for the beginning of the meeting, although I have one for at the time of the agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't get a chance to submit a request? First, we have a presentation from Visit Champaign County. Is Jane going to be here? Does anybody know? Jane DeLuce? Okay, maybe we could delay that. Do we need a motion for that? Do we need a motion to delay that presentation, or should we just, can we just move it down? Okay. We'll just put that on the side, and if she shows up, we'll have that presentation. Okay, we have a staff report on Boneyard Creek Community Day. Justin.
Yeah, so we just wanted to provide an update on the Boneyard Creek Community Day activities for this year. As some of you may be aware, the event was originally scheduled for April 29th of this year, and due to inclement weather, was rescheduled. Each satellite site has worked on rescheduling their own, or for their own date. So, we worked with the volunteers that had registered to attend and scheduled the make-up date for August 5th of this year. And so on that date, we had seventeen volunteers attend and did things, or marked forty-four storm drains with our drains to creek medallions. And then we had people in the Boneyard Creek from Matthews all the way up to the Boneyard Creek Crossing Park at Griggs and Race. And so we covered two shoreline miles of the creek and removed about three cubic yards of trash. So it was a pretty successful, given the coordination that was required. Beth Ranky, our stormwater technician, did a great job of coordinating with the volunteers and getting everything set up. So, we just wanted to provide that update and thank city council for your continued support of the event. It wouldn't be possible without the staff time and the funding that is put forward for that, for that activity each year. And so, we do have the next event scheduled for April 7th of 2018. And then, given this year's results, we actually have a rain date scheduled for April 21st. So if, if we need to do that again, we'll be a little bit better prepared. So that's, that's all I have for you. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Justin? Nope. Okay, thank you. And then the mayor had an announcement on a meeting, upcoming meeting?
Yes, I just wanted to let the council and public know that we've selected Slaven Management Consultants of Norcross, Georgia, to conduct the recruitment for the city administrator position. Slaven Management Consultants is an independent firm. They've placed more than eight-hundred-and-fifty professionals in positions in local government leadership. The search will be held by, will be led by the president of the company, Robert Slaven, and he'll be assisted by David Krings, who's the Midwest Regional Manager. So, Mr. Slaven and Mr. Krings are scheduled to visit Urbana next Monday and Tuesday, October 2nd and 3rd. They'll take a tour of the city, they'll meet individually with department and division heads, they'll meet with groups of emerging leaders in the city. They will meet with city council members and then give a presentation on Monday night, next Monday night, at our council meeting, just an overview of how the search process will be conducted. And so they have two full days of meetings. One of the reasons we selected this firm was the, the attention and the time they intended to spend in the community, learning about the community, and then helping us develop a candidate profile and a job description. And throughout the process, the emphasis will be on finding a candidate who's a good fit for our community. There's many, many people out there with the necessary skills and experience and training, but it, the key to these successful searches is finding a candidate who, who fits, fits our community and fits our, our city internally and externally. So, so we're really pleased with, with this selection. But I want to thank the, again, the committee that helped select the search firm. That was Todd Renton, Liz Borman from the HR Department, the Celia Clark from the Human Relations Office, and Michelle Brooks from Legal, and myself. So, next Monday, we will learn a lot more about how this whole process will unfold.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the mayor on that? How much, how much are we paying the search firm, do we know?
The base contract is about twenty-two thousand plus, and then we've budgeted a total of about twenty-eight thousand to cover travel expenses for the finalist candidates, but it's outlined in the contract.
Okay, thank you. Next is Resolution Number 2017-09-064R, a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement, the JAG program. Chief Morgan, did you, were you gonna say anything on that?
I didn't really have anything to add, other than the memo that I gave everyone. Basically, kind of what we had talked about last year, when we decided to enter into the lease agreement for the, the extra tasers. Hopes that we got a JAG grant this year, and if we did, that we would try to pay off that lease, so that we didn't have to ask for more money in our budget to do so. So that's kind of was the plan. It will, it comes up pretty close to paying off that five-year lease on the, on the tasers.
Okay.
Anybody has any questions?
Yep. Mayor Ellis.
So, since I'm new on council, I was wondering if you could tell me, these are eight tasers, but how many tasers do we have in total? Is it eight?
We have thirteen.
We have thirteen?
We had purchased five when we did the initial implementation, which was in March of fif- fifteen? Yes, March 15.
And how are they distributed? Because we, we have more than thirteen police officers.
Sure. So, you have to be a CIT officer in order to carry a taser, and...
Can you tell me what CIT means?
I'm sorry, Crisis Intervention Team Officer. I apologize. So, when we initially picked, chose the five, we asked people that were interested in carrying it, of course. We want them to want to carry the taser, because they have to go through the training, and they have to be tased with the taser in order to carry it. So obviously, we won't want to do that to somebody that doesn't want to do that. So, we asked for people to put in voluntarily for it, and then they're chosen through the, Rich Searls is the taser coordinator. He basically puts on the training and handles all of that. So he consults with the deputy chief and I about who we think would be the best candidates for that.
So how many tasers are on the street at any one time?
Oh, it just depends. Like, one of, I think one of the day shifts has three, because that's where the officers that, that carry them are signed up right now. We may only have one. It's possible. I haven't looked at it since we distributed the other eight, because we just got done doing the training within the last couple of weeks, to see if there happened to be a shift that ended up without one. I have, I hadn't checked that, but can certainly look into that for you if you'd like.
Thank you.
Eric?
So, this, this isn't actually the point of our resolution, but it's kind of relevant. How has the deployment or the carrying of tasers worked out? Has it, do you find that it helps in de-escalating resolving conflicts that otherwise with the less, you know, with only, with only lethal force or sub-taser level, might be difficult to resolve?
I've been very happy with it. We've had several scenarios where we've had an officer that's actually pulled the taser out of the holster, but once the person saw that they had a taser, they then complied with us and stopped resisting, or, or became compliant with our commands at that point, because they, they recognized that that was a possibility. So there have been several instances like that. We've only had to deploy it one time since we implemented them.
So, none of the dire predictions of these people who packed this room and told us not to do it, none of them have borne fruit or been evidenced in any way?
No.
Okay, that was, that point. Someday, one of them might someday tell me that he or she was wrong, but I'm not holding my breath.
Okay, any other questions about the JAG grant? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve this resol-, or send this council, send this resolution to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Jacobson, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2017-09-054, an ordinance naming a street alley, street avenue, alley, or other public place, changing North Lincoln Avenue to West Oaks Road. Public Works. Brad Bennett.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this evening. What this ordinance is for is, has to do with the completion of the new North Lincoln Avenue, that we're anticipating being completed here shortly this fall. In order to create confusion, or to avoid creating confusion, we're gonna look at changing a portion of the North Lincoln Avenue as it's presently named, to a different name, so it's not confused with the new North Lincoln Avenue. We've worked with the county for the areas that are outside the city limits. The only section of the road that you're gonna be changing the name on is the section that's within the city limits, so it'll be changing from North Lincoln Avenue to West Oaks Road. But the county has worked with the residents, everybody that lives out in that area is satisfied with what the proposed naming of the streets are. So we're here tonight to hopefully gain your approval to make that change. The change would not become effective until we open up the new North Lincoln Avenue, and we'll take care of notifying postal service and the residents and everybody else that will be affected by the street name change. Any questions?
Any questions for Brad?
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Is there a motion?
I move to send this ordinance to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Jacobson, seconded by Wu. Any other discussion? All those in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Before the next one, we did get one late public input slip, that's somewhat related, actually. Bishop King James Underwood wishes to express his concern about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems, and they're continually concerned. So next is Resolution Number 2017-09-065R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, agreement for sewer system modeling.
All right. So, the memo in your council package should detail it pretty well, but to summarize, the Public Works Department and the City of Urbana are part of an intergovernmental sanitary sewer technical committee with representatives from the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district, City of Champaign, Village of Savoy, and the University of Illinois, as well as the county. And we've been working this year on developing a sanitary sewer modeling program that would be a coordinated effort. So for that purpose, we've selected a sanitary sewer modeling software that will allow us to use our current mapping, or sewer mapping format, to create a hydraulic model for our sanitary sewers. This will be very helpful for assessing our existing capacity of our sewer system, determining how future development will impact our sanitary sewer system, and then also determining where we have areas of excessive inflow and infiltration that are overwhelming the system, as well as any possible repairs. So, like I said, we've selected the software, and that company also offers services to do the initial model creation. So, that's what the intergovernmental agreement is for, is for the shared cost of that service to be split between the sanitary district, the City of Urbana, and the City of Champaign. The, the split is shown on the council memo there. I think that's, that covers it. So we are just, we are seeking the council approval for the execution of the intergovernmental agreement for that cost share. So, take any questions.
Okay, any questions for Justin? I have a couple, first, I'll just, for people at home, it's forty-two thousand dollars for the services. The split would be twenty-one thousand from the sanitary district, fourteen thousand from Champaign, and seven thousand from Urbana. That's for the model development, basically.
Yes.
So we already own the software?
Correct.
Uh, have we had that for several years, or?
Uh, no, actually, that was a recent purchase in this fiscal year. We had budgeted for that in the previous, or, for this fiscal year, so we purchased it at the beginning of the year. It was selected for its use and kind of coordination with the, our GIS mapping database. So it'll, it'll be very effective at taking the information we already have and creating a model from that.
Do you know, with that same software, can it do double-duty to model stormwater flow?
It can, yes.
It can. So we'll have that discussion probably in a year or two, when we start.
Sometime down the line, hopefully, yes.
And then I asked you earlier if Savoy was participating, and basically, they aren't participating in this part, because they don't have the capacity to do the modeling or the staff, or something? Is that what you said?
Right, so I think that they're, the extent to which they've mapped their system is a little less, and they just aren't ready to commit the time or resources at this point. So if, if they did want to participate in the future, it would be a new intergovernmental agreement that we would have to pass, and we would have to determine how they can, how we can recoup the, or any costs that they should have shared in, or what their level of participation would be.
Okay. Eric?
Actually, Bill's questioning opens up a line for me that had not previously occurred to me. So, this is really an issue for any municipality, Rantoul, Savoy, Mohammed, whoever. But smaller cities might not have the, the expertise in-house to actually use the software. Is it reasonable to envisage that they would contract with either Champaign or us to actually do that on their behalf, and then they would reimburse us? Is that, is that kind of thing a reasonable arrangement?
That's certainly a possibility. There's, a, a part of this sewer services agreement is, or includes training from the software company. So, the agencies that participate now will gain some of that expertise from that training, and then either, you know, if Savoy did want to participate later on, they would be responsible for their own training, most likely, and, or, you know, as you bring up, maybe we'd come to an agreement where some of that, the services are provided by one of the other agencies, as part of some agreement.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion, or is there a motion?
I, I will move sending this, let's see, I guess I will approve sending this authorization request to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And then, last, we have ordinance number 2017-09-055, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Section 3A, liquor delivery. And we have the ordinance in our pocket, I don't think there was a memo. Did you want to say anything on that, Jim?
Briefly, the good folks from GoBrand, who seek to establish a business here in Urbana, will provide you more information on what they do. Essentially, as you probably recall, about a month ago, you approved an ordinance amendment that allowed packaged goods stores who sell alcoholic liquor in original package form, Class C liquor licensees, to basically walk liquor out to cars when they pull up to the store, and to deliver it on their premises, but actually outside the building itself. This is a, I believe, a logical extension of that, which would allow these folks and other holders of Class C licenses to accept orders for liquor, and I presume other goods, at their websites or by telephone, and then allow for delivery of those goods, including liquor in original package form, to the customer at the residence or wherever it's ordered. All the same precautions, all the same requirements that apply for the ordinance that you adopted, or the amendment you adopted about a month ago, would apply here. People taking the order would have to be twenty-one, people picking, the alcohol part of the order would have to be twenty-one, the drivers would have to be twenty-one, and they would have to check IDs before they turn over the liquor portion of the order. Their ID will have to match the person who ordered the liquor. So they can't have the older brother step out with their ID.
Okay, thanks. And then we have people from GoBrands, Raphael, Illich Schayer, Harlan Power. I'll let you say your names. And Adiv Maki. So if, did you want to make any kind of presentation, or here to answer questions?
By the way, thank you for having us. I would love to walk through the business.
Great.
Explain how we got to Champaign-Urbana, and a little bit of our business model. So, we're essentially a convenience store on wheels. So we'll stock everything that a convenience store stocks, and we'll deliver to you usually in thirty minutes or less, on a, on a sixteen or twenty-four hour basis. We're available in twenty-five major US cities. Twelve of those cities have alcohol. So a variation of beer, beer wine, or beer wine and spirits. Now, in the two and a half years that we've been delivering alcohol, we have not had a single citation to the business, or to any of the drivers delivering the alcohol. All the ID checking process is done through technology. So every driver has either an Android or an iPhone application, provided to them by GoPro. At the time of delivery, the ID is scanned, it'll tell you if it's real or fake, it'll match government database to see if that name exists within whatever license the state has issued, and then it'll, it'll tell you whether, now to fulfill delivery or not. For people that are under the age of twenty-one, have an expired ID, or the ID is fake, they are charged a fifty percent restocking fee. And that's mentioned three times through the alcohol delivery process. So there is no incentive for the driver to somehow cheat the system, nor has it happened in two and a half years of liquor delivery across twelve states. So we, we are now near to Champaign. We like to get really involved with the community, and we, we were talking about briefly introducing local craft beers. We do it in a number of our cities, Portland, Tempe, Tucson, Seattle. And we're looking really to integrate to the community and provide the full services. Yeah. Also, two, two more key points, one of which is employment. We have employed thousands of drivers nationally. On a national basis today, we have two-hundred-and-thirty full-time W-2 employees, heavily skews hire in alcohol-enabled cities. So we're, we're looking to hire a number of both W-2 and 1099 employees, as well as provide, you know, an additional layer of safety for the residents of the city, you know, not having people have to leave their home, drink and drive, and, you know, ultimately get to the liquor store. It's completely safe. The ID needs to match the credit card on file, so to the case of, of not having your older brother in there, it's not possible, and the entire process is secure.
Okay, thank you. Jim, did you want to add something?
One final point, they have identified a location within Urbana that they're planning on locating, if you all approve.
And actually, in point of fact, for the record, Harlan Powell, I'm the attorney for GoBrands, thank you all for having us here this evening. It's my understanding that they have secured already that location, and the, the website is actually up and functioning here in this municipality. They are offering a number of goods as we speak, obviously, no alcoholic beverages until, if and until the, the board recommends this for approval, but they are up and running today.
Yeah, no fresh produce, so just convenience packaged goods. Think ice cream, think snacks, think drinks.
Mayor Marlin?
So your warehouse loca-, you'll have like a warehouse location?
Correct. Nineteen oh eight Linview, right next to the Lincoln Road and the Harley-Davidson dealership.
Okay. And what's your delivery area?
So we cover the, both Champaign and Urbana, the entire proper, so basically, the entire city limits.
Okay.
Dean?
Two questions, I'll shoot them both at you at once. What hours are you going to be delivering, and are they going to be accepting cash, or is this all paid for online, or on the phone?
So since we charge a restocking fee for alcohol, the regular, the regular service does accept cash. If there is any kind of alcoholic beverage in the cart, the app will not allow you to select the cash option, it'll only be credit card. In terms of delivery, the final delivery for alcohol, I believe in Urbana, is 2:00 AM, so we'll not be accepting any orders past 1:15, 1:10. As soon as we identify what the average delivery time is, we'll subtract that from the maximal allotted delivery.
Okay, so basically, the, the hours that are allowed by ordinance, are the hours that you will deliver? Okay, and cash is not accepted for alcohol?
Cash is not accepted for alcohol anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Ellis?
So, you have to have a Class C liquor license in order to do this, is that correct?
Yes.
Or is it, Diane, does that mean that we're gonna have another request to extend the number of Class C, or is that even necessary? I'm just curious if you've already obtained one?
Yes. Once, once the ordinance is approved, I'm sure they'll be applying for a Class C, which is a packaged good license. They have to get a liquor license to sell liquor. So, the adoption of this ordinance does not give them the legal authority to sell, it just allows them to apply.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Diane?
And can you clarify, do you have to, will you deliver only to resident, to a person's residence, or wherever that person is? And I'm thinking to people who are tailgating and run out of beer, will, will you develop, deliver to a tailgating party?
So, usually no. So we, we deliver alcohol on a variety of college campuses nationally. We do not deliver outside of a concrete address, so a work or home.
Okay.
And then, I had a question, is, since your physical location is in Urbana, I understand you'll need a liquor license from us, but since you'll be delivering to Champaign, do you have to, do they need to have a special ordinance to allow you to deliver liquor within their city limits?
My understanding is that that is not required, unless a municipality makes, enacts an ordinance that seeks to specifically restrict or outlaw any type of door-to-door delivery, they would be free to deliver both here in Urbana and in neighboring jurisdictions. And there would be no need to get an additional license in that neighboring jurisdiction. The way that the state law works with regard to electronic transactions, the transaction itself is deemed to have occurred within the licensed premises, wherever that premises is located. So, so long as there is a license that covers that sale, they would be free thereafter to do any sort of after-transaction delivery as they saw fit.
Okay, I think that answers my second question, which is, would Champaign be getting sales tax off of deliveries that would all be?
They would not. This would all be Urbana sales tax.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move that we send this ordinance to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Jacobson, seconded by Wu. Moved by Jacobson, seconded by Wu. Any discussion? Nope, okay. And, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.